There are love and development for this.
Okay. What's my other?
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Albany Water Board Order Friday, November twenty first two thousand twenty five at about nine ten maybe. And the roll call, all board members are present, but I'd like to go around the room so that everybody on Powell knows who was here. I'm Chuck Hogan, Chairman.
Rachel Johnson, Vice Chairperson.
Joe Coffey, Water Commissioner.
I'm Bill Kahn, REIT Consultant.
Bill Suker, Deputy Commissioner.
When you wash, water manager.
Being a trick and charity.
Justin Schubelbein, Operations Manager.
Jody Jabini, Water Treatment and Facilities Manager.
Sarah Terrell, HR Generalist.
Laura Golfo, Counsel.
Steve Mercer, Marketing Communications.
Ari Felis, Senior Accountant.
Chris Powers, Director of Fiscal Operations.
James Rizell, Board Member.
Anthony Orange, Secretary.
Yeah, I'm your assistant.
Thank you. Wonderful to have the senior staff here. You added a lot to the board meeting and it means a lot to us, thank you Laura. I know we're taking time away from things you want to be doing probably, but it's good. I'd like, if I could, to get a motion to approve the minutes submitted. Second, all favor. All right. Thank you and thank you Karen for doing this, it was very helpful. Nice to reread them. If I get older, memory is good, it used to be the minutes where they had them. We don't have anybody from the public. They have committee and finance report.
All right, Governance Committee met this morning and I tried to remember all of the highlights discussed. So we completed our annual governance requirements and concluded that during the next calendar year, the governance committee will meet again as well in January as usual and then in February and March to review and consider revisions to the internal controls policy, the senior discount policy and the five laws and then I will, as an aside, say that Laura has also agreed to review and make recommendations to the Commissioner on valuation process for this year. Thank you for that. And then the board voted and documented completion of the annual review policy of the annual review policy for two thousand twenty five. We also discussed board strategic planning and that's another reason for the February and March governance committee meetings. And then recommendations for the board should consider later this morning are acknowledging completion of the annual review of the policies, adopting the two thousand twenty six board meeting schedule and committee meeting schedule and designating the Commissioner as the contracting officer in property disposition policy. End of report, we must send this something.
Any further comments?
Thank you.
Chris?
Well, welcome everybody, this is the normal board members and our dream team over here, so welcome to our financial report for October two thousand twenty five, both the year to date and for the month. For the first part, and this number may seem very, it should seem very good to you, that's a six million dollar collection number for the month of October. And before we go crazy and give high fives, there's actually a double billing that's done in September to allow us to do the tax roll going through October and November, but either way, that's all, it's very high loss. We made some increased collection efforts on OGS or REEF and certain bill. We've basically cleared out their aged AR, which is something that we've had since I've been here, so about one point four million dollar windfall on that included in that six million dollar number, nevertheless, very strong. The thirty six million dollar revenue year to date obviously includes that number and it's on track for what I think is about a forty two million dollar, that's our budget and we're within that realm there, so. And that is an increase of five million dollars from prior year on, and again, this is for you guys, this is actually collected cash, not sales. So this is, that's a strong number, it again, does reflect some cash collections that are part of that, but it's also in line with our rate increases and our increased collection efforts. Miscellaneous revenues at twenty two thousand, customer penalties for the period and interest revenues of two hundred eighty eight thousand, year to date penalties and interest revenue six hundred three thousand. We separate that revenue, we don't want to include that in our operations, but that's a, that's a strong ancillary amount that we we use and need. The expenditures to date are for the period two point seven million relatively close to last year. Twenty six million for year to date where it's, we have some timing with the county bill that will fix for next year, we'll make sure that budget lines up, push that to November. But the majority of that increase is related to that. If you were to fix that and line that up apples to apples, we basically would have almost the same expenses year to date with a significantly five million dollar increase revenues, that's obviously strong and going in the right direction. Next page, Karen, so this part is what we described, our capital spend. We've spent three point two million dollars so far on our capital projects through the month of October, that's the eighty three fifty's you guys are familiar with and below that, we've broken out sort of what we receive for grants and loans, one million ninety thousand or so, the majority of the first two were grants related to long-term capital plans, a lot related to lead here from Katie helping us out. And on one loan, on our eighteen nine oh three, we have live activity in eighteen nine oh three loans and grants, that's one of our busiest eighty three fifty accounts, so we're gonna, you'll see a little later on, we're starting to get into, we've used a lot of our grants first, we're starting to get into financings now. And yeah, that's, that's expected, I obviously want more grants than financing and we've had some strong grants for our projects, so that's, that's very good. Actual, next piece of that, actual the budget. Again, you know, our revenues for the month over two point five. There was some timing, why that doesn't line up again, apples to apples, one of the, I think one of the round sevens actually went into October, so we didn't actually get everything billed prepaid if you will, so that's kind of the change there, and the year to dates is within expectations. Expenditures, again, the main change there is the the timing of the county bill. Last piece of this is our overall other relevant information or age receivables. Again, with the efforts in OGS, we brought that number back down to about one point six, that's typically what our age receivables are. Balance of our line of credit, again, two point one, we're going, the expectation is to solve the line of credit, pay the line of credit in early two thousand and twenty six as soon as possible. We can get, we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And interest paid, so this is our debt service, if you will, of one point one million dollars, that's just interest, not principal. Year to date for the line of credit, sixty four thousand dollars, so we, you know, that's a sizable piece of this bottom line money that goes away as soon as we pay that line of credit. And our bond debt, interest one million sixty eight, so we, that is within expectations of heavily subsidized debt that you and I could not get in the market personally, so that's, again, that's good stuff. Next piece, Karen, is just, this is just our overall numbers comparison to some of the verbiage that I just spoke about, so we already really addressed it. What is added sort of on the bottom is, you know, our debt service component. Again, this is, we're talking like cash basis here, so there's some timing with this from year to year. You're gonna see, if we're borrowing more, our cash, our debt service is going to go up. Keep in mind, things are also, we're also paying things off as we go, they're dropping off that schedule. So relatively, relatively consistent there, but I think I addressed sort of the main items there already. Karen, so you can go to the next page. This is just a combination, sort of our revenues, our budget to actual, the main purpose of this page is just to sort of break out for everybody what the additional cash receipts, our miscellaneous cash receipts as we, as we say, so a lot of that is you know, just anything that does kind of fall under our operations, then we also segregate out sort of our rents, the various rental incomes that we have and from year to date, all of that has total. And I know he's been bothering the county, and the county executive David Coy called me, they're trying to get that moved.
They're paying monthly.
Yeah, they are paying, they haven't, Laura, they haven't settled the actual back agreement that they agreed to do, but that's an interesting case, so we can talk about that. But overall, the other, our other let's see, are paying on a pretty consistent basis. Next piece, this just breaks out sort of the overall our expenses by departments, starting off with administration, rolling all the way through pump station. The bottom piece of that is, we consider sort of our non-operation type expenses, our taxes paid to municipalities, if you didn't know, we do actually pay taxes for some of your operation, I didn't know that, being a not-for-profit, but we do. Generally about one point seven million dollars, the county sewer contract, it's about eight million we budget for. And then contingencies, insurance, there are things that were charged by the city, workers' comp, retirement medical types costs all flow through there, so we try to summarize that at the very bottom just to kind of pull all that information together, we're about four million dollars over, you can see from prior year and it yeah, mainly gets hit in equipment, as we had mentioned verbally, that we spend a lot more on vehicles and other equipment to try to catch up for some things that had not happened in previous years, that was a big chunk of it and the rest of it, things are just frankly more expensive and you know, we can see that and the various categories that we broke out there, so. But luckily, the revenue has outpaced that and we, everybody here, I think, has done I think a pretty reasonable drop, trying to contain costs, it's a lot of it, it is what it is and, you know, we have some work to do there, but again, I think it's within expectations and strong, so. Next piece there, Karen. This, this page here. Certainly for those who've never seen it before, but this actually breaks out what our capital expenditures are, this goes way back to nineteen ninety five. So you could see almost two hundred million dollars eighty three fifty accounts of money that's flowed through there either through our own financing, mostly through bond and outside financing, EFC and an occasional outside bond, so that's pretty strong and obviously fairly ramped up since two thousand eighteen, as you can see that detail there. If you just go to sort of the far right and you look at the two thousand twenty five column, that ending number there in the first kind of box is seven, seven point one million dollars, that's, that's the expenditure, that's eighty three fifty. And what we basically have in grants and financing that we borrowed to do that sort of work is at ten point six million dollars, so. That's good, we want that number in that direction, we have the money first. Or we do, the project, granted, it's earmarked in different ways, not that easy, but that's the right ratio without question, so. Rough numbers is potentially about three or four million dollars in our banking accounts now that are earmarked for projects and the rest is operations. So, so that is, that is good. The next page is the overtime page and I think a lot of it was, you know, we kind of got hit earlier in the year, but you know, it's, again, these are, it is what it is, it's within expectations. And, you know, I know we're coming into our colder season here, who knows what's gonna happen for the year end, but relatively, it's higher, but relatively comparable to prior year.
Actually, it's a little bit higher than prior years.
Yeah.
It's been persistent all year, it has not dropped like it usually does, so we've shared this information with Justin, the operations guys. He put some eyes on this thing because it's persistently high and it probably can be mitigated to some extent.
The bottom of the schedule here, you're gonna see the kind of famous due to, due from that Arif Liar always talking about, and that's at five, five point two million, that's five point two million owed to us. But don't go crazy yet because they have, we haven't put the county bill or so the tax, the tax rule and a lot of others sort of offsets against this, we're gonna see what the way this plays out. We'll get to that in a minute where we think that number is gonna be, but it still should be positive, well into the positives and I, you know, perhaps two, three million area, we're guessing on that, but that's what we hope, so that's we've been monitoring this all year and you can show that, well, sorry, we'll show that on the next page too, but just before that, large users balance one, that's AR, that's within expectation. Karen, so you can go to the next page.
I have a question, Chris.
Sure.
You said that number is gonna be, when you get to the end of the year, you think it's still gonna be a pretty big number?
Oh, yeah.
How do we make it so that, because that's, that's our money?
Absolutely.
How do we make it so that we have that money earlier in the year so we can invest it?
We, when we first did this, our sort of our transfer schedule, we weren't as wise in the ways of the world that due to and due from sort of work, we do that budget so early in the year in twenty four that we, quite frankly, we were transferring too much money.
Right.
We were covering ourselves, so what we did this year with Joe and Arif and all the department heads is make sure that we have an unbelievably lean budget and we're not overly transferring money that we're never gonna, seriously. So that was the first part, was to mitigate that. In addition to that, we had actually, we had actually factored in the tax roll in there, so we were way over than we should have been, so we actually carved a part of that out and did a lean budget and we think that should at least, we should still be owed something, but we're not giving them interest-free loan on that side. You're absolutely right, it's our money and, you know, so frankly, we didn't get it right. The first time, we, you know, we sent, but we didn't know exactly what was happening and we do now, by virtue of, oh, sorry, that's, that's the AR aging, I've discussed that, we're fine with that. OGS was a big problem there.
So we would actually, if we could owe them, you know, like five hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, we'll have done really, really well. And get to hold our money.
And yes, the key, just like the IRS, you know, I want to get the IRS interest-free loan, we don't want to do the same thing here, so. That by virtue of this next schedule, we'll show you, show you here, sorry. Still lost the rounds, I'm jumping around, but yes, go there, okay, so this is a schedule that, you know, Arif and I, mostly Arif pulled together and that's, that's us tracking this, you know, you can see like the big overhead, you know, there's things that haven't hit this due to, due from yet and that's kind of hit in December, so we'll, we'll, we'll you know, obviously, this is the level of detail this goes into, right, so when I mentioned the budget transfer, that's the very first line, that's the money that's going in every month, Bill Kahn helps us pull it together and essentially is meant to cover all of our costs, but the expenditures below that, those are all the offsets, so it's a very little amount of categories for us, but there's a lot of categories for them and that's been the challenge of basically figuring out if these numbers are, you know, are accurate, you know, and we don't think, you know, there's any malfeasance going on, we just, there's a lot of, a lot of activity there, you know, and that's just, yeah, and it's you know, we've met with them and we have a, you know, Ken Bennett, he's got a young guy, Nick Rowley, they're great guys and they're doing their best, but it's a lot of activity, you could lose something and you know, just in the administration of this whole thing. So now that we're tracking this, you know, that bottom right corner, you're gonna see that, I don't know if you can see it there, a little bit, Karen. So there's that five point one, so that's actually what we're owed as of, as of this date, so we'll see how the rest of these two months pile out, I think it's gonna be a positive, I don't think it's gonna be five, but it's gonna be to be a very good number and particularly with where we think the tax role is going, I can talk about that in a minute. So all strong things and I actually did reach out to Ken Bennett to say, listen, we need to set up a process where we we settle these amounts at the end of the year, particularly when we're owed money, so they agreed to it, it's not you know, they're not against it, we just have to put some administration to it and kind of make it happen, so, but, you know, that's that's good news, though, absolutely, very, very strong.
Really great to have.
Absolutely, and this is, this is our refir, this is what we got. To pull that data together, you have no idea how much is rolling through those accounts and that's thousands and thousands of entries, so. This is, and I don't, and this is new to this packet, this is, we put this in probably the past four months and this is what we're we're doing to monitor this, so that's a big plus and you know, certainly is gonna help us and certainly help us with our strategic planning going forward as well.
You know, help the state.
Yes, no question, yeah, yeah, so. But so there's, Karen, you can go back, I know we're jumping around, there's our routes. So this is our route sevens, you know, we segregated that out just to, you know, show what our large our larger paying customers are, tier customers, tier one and tier two. You know, so we're, you know, we're, again, our kind of our stronger players are, you know, certainly the nano OGS who've, you know, just been consistently delivering and the fee anomaly is still in here, but for the most part we are, you know, we're kind of headed in the right direction, is, this, if we've sort of tackled the expense side over the past year and a half or two, that one of our strategic goals that will be in our plans you know, with Jody is to make sure we've, we're capturing all of our billing correctly and that not only are we, does that process sound that we're actually capturing all of our customers, so that's a big goal for you know, certainly for two thousand twenty six, but again, we're up seven percent. And that varies a little bit, but again, that's not a ten percent rate increase, you would expect that to be in that range and then of course, the Bethlehem collection, one point, almost one point seven million dollars. That was a bit of a windfall as well, there was only four hundred and eighty six prior to, four hundred and six thousand prior to that. So we could skip the due to, due for, we talked about that. And this, again, okay, and then this is the, just the breakout of our routes, again, we've, since I think about April or May, we've come in very strong on our routes, that's route two coming in in comparison to prior year, so eleven, eleven point six million percent percentage increase and again, that's on ten percent, that's, I think, it's a testament to our guys out there who are getting, getting the billing out. Getting the right meters, Jose, I think you're getting better as we're going along and that's, that's strong, so that's, that's, that's good news.
Are the late fees in there or they're in a separate line item?
No, they're gonna be begged in there, it'll be the whole, the whole bill.
So that eleven could be late fee.
Certainly, yeah, 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 we've, yeah.
Because we weren't doing it before last year.
Definitely, probably a good, you know, reason for a higher than ten percent collection of the late fees, yeah, I agree with it. So that is it for that. And I think that is it for that. Is that it? So, well, yeah, that's, it's, for those that haven't sat in on these things, this, you know, this is a, is positive, there's no question, but we never had that kind of number, again, we did collect some old AR, makes it, makes it a little optimistic, but, you know, not a doom and gloom, sir, this is, this is, there's strikes here that we, we need to play off and we have some work to do in other areas, but we should feel good about this.
Budget.
Budget. What are we saying about budget? Well, the budget is, let me, let me, let me back up one piece for that, the we did, so our budget is submitted, we're, you know, we're, Joe and I went and got it approved, so, you know, we're you know, we're, we're gonna distribute that sort of final budget, I think, with respect, because it's a little different this year, we're gonna, we have, the rate in the budget isn't that exactly gonna be the same as the rate that we're gonna implement, not very close, but we, you know, we do this budget so earlier in the year, we have to make it instant. So, but from a revenue perspective, you know, I think I mentioned it was estimated about forty two million dollars, we're gonna be you know, we think about forty four, forty five, and that's the revenue that we're thinking that's gonna come in and essentially cover all the expenses, so we're not generating any extra cash here. This is what the money's coming in and it's kind of coming back out, we do have a small, relatively small reserve for CapEx, a hundred thousand dollars does come out into our, into our fidelity accounts and interest. But like we mentioned before, Joe, Arif, the department head, this is, it's it's a lean budget in past, in past years and, you know, we've tended to to put kind of higher amounts in contracted services and then when monies were needed, we had to transfer monies around and as a media, it's a lot of administration, you can only have to go and put in front of the CNS meetings every two weeks and that's something to kick it back, the hope is, is to get down on that for twenty six, get it right the first time and not have to do that level of that and save a lot of our angst of getting all that set up, so we're pretty happy about that, we'll see how it goes.
Is the city budget finalized?
Yeah, it's adopted.
Get on the, on the website, Bill, then. I don't know if it's been signed by the mayor, but the council approved the budget Monday with a couple amendments that helped the tax increase down to two point five percent. So they made some reductions in expenses primarily on, somebody's employment program was one. Forget what the other ones were. I think the budget is actually, I'm not sure it's wean, I think it's care, we talked to every department head contributed what they thought their budget needs were gonna be, so they're included in there. We have a net addition of staff, there were some healthy salary increases and compensation adjustments built into the budget, so I think, you know, it's I think it's a good budget on the expense side.
Yeah, when I say lean, I mean we're not providing any extra cash, this is the revenue, and this is covering the expenses and the minimalist amount of, and again, we're putting some money in for CapEx, one hundred thousand a month, but, no, I, I think it's accurate. This is, and well, I think in the past, and we haven't done this since I've been here with respect to budget meetings and then we have to adhere to the budget now. And, you know, that's something we're gonna talk about, as we get into December, Arif and I kind of set those meetings up again. And if there are needs, you know, we can make things happen, we just sort of need to know and then we'll get ahead of it and I think you guys had at least monthly budget meetings in the past, I'm not sure exactly, but we're gonna probably do something in that range. So that's actual budget. Other relevant information. All right, Rachel, you mentioned Paris before, so I can successfully, I had found, you know, notions of Paris until this Paris came. No, it's, we are caught up through two thousand twenty five, so the finance authority, everything through the water is caught up. We have filed everything we possibly can, so we're already in violation for twenty five, but the mere fact we didn't file in March. But we're, Arif and I are pulling that data together, we should have that wrapped up, both the finance, now that we don't have to do it and the water board, so we're, we're kind of on that, we've gotten some efficiencies, we're a little better at it now. We could, we could be better at this, there's no question about it, we're gonna try to schedule this audit and a lot earlier, but we're, we're a function of the city, if the city doesn't close their books and they didn't close until April, maybe May, some of the eighty three fifty accounts, then we can't, the orders won't show up. I tried that, my first year, no, no, you need, these need to be closed, you need, we get adjustments for them, we get numbers from them. So that automatically pushes us past March, we're just in such a a bad state, we don't, you know, it makes us look, we don't have to do that, we could do, we'd have these guys here in February knocking out, we would have an audited financial statement, we could do our own Paris. So if there's a way to something we can mention to the you know, to the city to speed that up or we get some kind of waiver, you know, it looks like we're in violation, but we're really not, we're subject to them.
You know, there's been a change in leadership in the budget law.
Yeah.
And I like what they did, the new, the new way they present information, they've upgraded their webpage, they've really made some real improvement.
Yeah.
And I looked at the list of the the places that were out of compliance, it was longer than the list of the places that were in compliance.
Yeah.
Because the March date is so early. Maybe at some point we ought to try to reach out to them and see if they could give us a little more time to get.
Absolutely, I agree with it.
It's not gonna change.
Yeah, probably true.
We've been down this road before, they're not gonna change it and a lot of these authorities are, it's a technical compliance issue and frankly, some of the authorities don't submit at all.
Yeah.
Because they're negligent, so there's a difference in our miss and other misses.
Yeah.
So I think we do what we do.
So, we're, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make this audit earlier no matter what, so we can spread out our time, so our summers aren't getting crushed. But, but yeah, it's just like we're in this continual loop where we can't seem to be totally there.
One of the things that we're required to send it to Paris, there's other things that we need.
Yeah, we could do everything but that.
The independent audit report is always gonna be late, but we can make it earlier late than we have been.
That's what we're, absolutely, yeah, and that's you know, that, that we can do, we know how to do it now, but but it's just, you put all this work in and you're still in violation, it's infuriating, you know, yes, it's, it's crazy, so. Well, that is it for me.
Any questions, comment from the board? Um. Phil Fong. Great recitation. So a lot of work has gone into this. There've been more emails than.
Getting there. There's been a lot of back and forth, but, um, let me just start by, by saying. This has been an incredibly good year. Um, you know, we had some really disappointing numbers during COVID. Um, revenue declines, um, expenses, um. But between the large users, um. The rate increase from last year, which obviously was ten percent, um, and expense control. It's been really a very, very, very positive year. Um. But looking forward. There's a lot of challenges. Um, one of the things, and, and I'll. Distribute this, uh, for anybody who wants to see it, but the debt coverage ratio is. Really the most important thing that, that. From a compliance perspective and, uh.
Maybe explain to the staff what the best ratio is.
It's, well, there's a ratio that, um, that requires, um. We compute it, but it's a ratio of debt service requirements to cash available effectively. And we have to be at one point one five to one, meaning for every dollar that we, we have. We really have to have a cushion of fifteen cents on that. For the bondholders. And you can't sell bonds without having a debt coverage ratio that's in that range, um. And.
And we also get a better rate.
You get a bit well, or you, you, you can't get financing.
Or you can get it, right.
Uh. Once going back, um, about twenty years ago, there was a breach in the debt coverage ratio. Um, and, uh. We were in a position where there were two years in which there were consecutive fifteen percent increases. As a result of that. And, and what it was, was effectively that. Um. You know, the lesson is that you really can't say we're gonna do something tomorrow. Because there's enough things that can swing materially. Um, within the waterboard that could push us back. You know, I'm not suggesting that there's another COVID. But things like the craziness in Washington, um. If anything happens to. E F C's ability to help fund our bonds, well, not, not our direct bonds, but. Capital project funding, um. We have a real problem, a, a significant problem, because we don't have the ability to. Um, and I'm not saying that something's gonna happen, but it just seems that. You know, with New York City being the largest participant with the F C. Um, and. There's likely, there's, there's a possibility there could be craziness with that. Um. The other thing is. You know, you, in, in the past, I talked about there really. Only two things that create a rating, that create a need for a rate increase. One is a decline in cash. And we do have a very slow decline in cash. Um, when the folks who, who great point were here last month, I think, um, and they put that, the chart up. We've really substantially consumed the extra money we borrowed for capital projects. Those funds are really gone now. There, there's still a little left, but they're substantially gone. Um. And. We have, we still have some line of credit debt. But beyond that is the debt coverage ratio and how. A declining debt coverage ratio is. Shows the significance of a problem. So. Again, I, I can make copies for everyone. But if we look at what our debt coverage ratio, and again, it really is one point one five to one is where we have to be. That's the covenant. Um, the year after we did. The, the authority borrowing. Uh, so for December thirty first, twenty two. We were at one point nine nine to one, which is an incredibly good debt coverage ratio. Um. In two thousand twenty three, we were at one point eight seven to one. So it declined a bit. This past year, December thirty first, twenty four, we were at one point five six to one. So. It's going down. And there's no reason to think that, you know, as you. Our cushion is less and less. And again, I'm not suggesting we're gonna be, you know, breaching that covenant. But I can tell you with pretty good certainty that for twenty five, even though these are positive results. Our debt coverage ratio is gonna go down primarily because there's more debt. And our income, while revenues are very good. Still is not gonna be where perhaps it should be. So. The recommendation is that there be an increase. Um, and that increase be, um. Uh, wa- uh, seven and a half percent. Um, which should be sufficient not to gain ground, but to hold our own for another year or so.
I think I ask this every year, but I always need this clarification. Debt is defined for our equation as all debt, not just our authority bonds. It's.
It's all bond debt. It does not include, for example, that we still owe million dollars on the line of credit.
Not two million, two point.
It does not include that.
Yeah.
Right. Because even though. Regardless of what the bank thinks, if there was a default, it's the bondholders who are gonna get paid before the bank.
Yeah. It doesn't include the notes as well. So notes, and then the notes turn to bonds, but all that gets brought into. The ninety nine million dollars of debt that I think, oh, yeah, a lot of credit stuff.
Chris, you wanna add anything? Joey, you wanna add anything?
Well, I think the one thing I was asking, of course, Sean, this is my last, uh, hurrah, but. My question is always been looking at the modeling. What are we looking at? Not just this year, but next year, perhaps a two or three year lookout. Which is what a lot of communities that I'm familiar with, when they look at their rate, they look at, I've focused it out more than just next year.
Yeah, I think what Joe's saying very politely is that we need to improve our process a bit. Mm hmm. And maybe start a little earlier in the year.
Because, I mean, if we looked at, if you look at our, our three to five year goals, we had a goal to. Build in some capital expenses in our operating budget. We had a goal to build in, uh, the contribution to. Uh, the sinking fund, if you will, or reserve fund. They have more money to that. How does that factor into the rate increase? I know we're talking about this year, you know, paying back the line of credit two million bucks. That's an element of revenue generation. What's our target for a reserve fund? To me, that, that's what should be built in. My, that's my question about the process. I don't have a concern about the number. I have a concern about the process that gets the number and what is downstream looks like.
I, I agree with that, but.
They would do nothing but increase that number.
Again.
And how, what, what's the target? Increase, what's the target that you're shooting at? At least then you know how high to aim. That's what I'm trying to get to. So you just shooting up something up in here, thinking we're gonna cover whatever's under it. That, that's not performed. It's about process.
At my work, we have to budget out seven years. I'm responsible for that. And there's quite a few assumptions that I write down, saying, right, I'm gonna do it wrong this way, but that. That would help. Feel comfortable for the future.
Yeah, I mean, this was, again, this was a five percent. We knew five percent cover the operations.
The minimums.
The minimums. That we knew from a very embedded. Department told, this is five percent is gonna cover that. What covers our excess liabilities? Okay, so. What's that, that number? We want to pay off this line of credit that's bearing ten grand a month per interest. We have liabilities related to the long-term control plan of it that are continually to grow, or grow. And it's at least through four million dollars. So the expectation is. With seven and a half percent, we cover our operations. We have amount, an amount to pay off the line of credit, let's say. And we can do that early. We have the cash, but as long as, you know, we can pay that off, it's, it'll be authorized this. And then at some point, start some, some. Installment plans, if you will, on these long-term control plan debts that have been accumulating over, over, over the years. Uh, I do agree, we, we, we do a forecast. We do look at it, even out in, in twenty seven, with all the activity, particularly, you know, um. These, these long, the long-term, our, our capital plans and things of that nature, just seem to be a rolling plan. You know, it's always a hundred and twenty million if you do all these things. Who, who knows what kind of cash requirement that, that you might need. So it's almost. We want to go out for far the years, but we can at least very much see the next year. And we know that, that you can make a strong argument for it to be higher. We're, we're doing our best to control costs. For this city. This is the minimum. And, uh, the hope is in twenty six, twenty seven, we gain other efficiencies, not just raising rates, but let's. Be more streamlined. Let's incorporate A I. Let's do certain things that, um, are gonna help us. And, you know, it's a challenge, but it's whatever, it's every challenge. Uh, that, that people work in this, in this, uh, industry has, so.
Or, or I guess I'm trying to reflect it as a, as a resident. Also. Bill and I, you know, we, we speak to the comments. And we need to be able to communicate that effectively through Steve and the court that we do at a public hearing. Kind of the quantitative basis for the number. And we want to do, we want to do this, we want to, yeah, we want to do all that. But what is, what does that mean dollar wise? Now, does that factor into a rate increase that we frankly should be able to clearly justify to the electors? Who are gonna ask us about it?
You're right. And, and, and there are, you know, in that regard, if our. If our total expenses this year. Are about forty million, right? Hmm. Twenty five percent of that. We have absolutely no control over. The property taxes, um, and the sewer contract. Is hovers around this year, around ten million.
Yep.
Um. That makes. It's almost like you have to have a footnote with that. Because while most of the other things. Are somewhat predictable. Those have proven never to be predictable. And, and with the additional costs that will likely. Be assessed for the sewer contract, um. It could be that this is the beginning. Of a series of rate increases to go on for a long time.
And that's the communication that Bill and I had with Mayor Elector Players about the county sewer district.
Right.
About the, uh, need for intense capital expenses on their end and how we're responsible for almost sixty percent. Right. So I mean, we had those, but again, that's the quantification that we put into a description to demonstrate. Why we're asking for, we're asking for.
Mm hmm.
So that, that's still, amen. I'm done. It's, I support my case.
And we projected some increase for the county sewer district cost next year. They don't actually give us any particular correspondence in regard to that, but.
I think we just took your number.
I think Angela, Angela might call us and get us a heads up in terms of their. They're having any particular, uh, of a period in the heading process to that.
Well, that, that was the thought when pulling this together as well. Then if there is a specific county. Hike that we will segregate that for the, the rate pair. So this is, this is why we're doing it because of this. Here's your normal order. Guess what? But we have to pay this and we have to subcharge you that amount. But we don't know what that number is, so we didn't do it this year.
Yeah, so the, uh. We, we pay the county, a, a portion is for debt service and portions for operating costs. And we know that the portion for debt services, you know, expected to pick a whole way up. So western is shouldn't. At some point be some sort of a surcharge in regard to that, um. Because until that really becomes a long-term debt on their part, it's gonna be a, a pretty big unknown for. The years they go through the process, they do know these agreements.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the boards? Let's move on. I'm the optimist in it. I'm counting on Laura. At the lower, I really think that we're gonna hear more about that later on, but I'm really hoping. At least that's crazy. Now, million seventy real place active, but probably great. You gotta be like, let's move on. Joe, you introduce, yeah.
Uh, sure. Let me get on, well, too. We, I think, again, we talked last month about. Uh, how helpful it would be to have our, kind of what I call department heads within the department. Attend the board meetings on a, on a monthly basis. And provide maybe a brief summary of anything that's immediate on the radar. That would be of particular interest to the board. I mean, they could probably each talk for an hour, but that's not what we're asking them to do. So. Uh, I got Joe D G P, who everybody knows is, is our water treatment plant facility manager. Joe's been kind of, uh. Also coordinating and leading what I would call the internal strategic planning, uh. Cycle that we're going through at this point, as we have some transition stuff coming up. You know, we've got Justin Schiebelbein, uh. Fellow R P I grad, so we'll kind of talk about that. Justin, um, is our. Operations manager primarily has been on the sewer side, but has been assuming more and more, uh. Overall operations on both the water and the sewer end. Got tremendous knowledge, uh, institutional knowledge of everything that we do. He's worked hard to get certifications both on the wastewater side and the water side. And, uh, so he'll be talking a little about some of the things we have there. Katie McHidrick is, uh, representing. Representing Rebecca today. Katie McHidrick is representing Rebecca today from our engineering. As you all know, Katie's been our. Program manager on the lead service. And I don't know if it's public knowledge for everyone yet. But Katie will be leaving the water department at the end of the year, take a, uh, job opportunity in a private sector with a consulting firm. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for Katie as a young professional, as much as we hate to lose her. Uh, I think it's just something that she needs to do, and I'm glad she has this opportunity. And then Amy. Everybody knows Amy. Amy's our watershed manager.
One's in love with Amy.
Amy's been, uh, you know, instrumental in some of the, you know, the kind of the real initiatives we've taken with, uh, the carbon stuff and the working woodlands and just kind of. Uh, the work that she's done in the watershed's been amazing, has a great team. All the folks here are great folks working for them and with them. So. That's why they're here today. So we're gonna start with Joe. I guess, is that what you got?
Yeah.
Joe? Yeah, I'm just gonna give you a brief summary on what we're doing with the strategic planning team. Uh. So in, in twenty five, we really used the senior staff. As your, and, and Albany Water Department's strategic planning team. Most of the, the, uh. Actually, all of the division managers to put together the framework for. One-page plan for twenty five for developing North Stars. We put together a, uh, what we call the C D P F or, uh. Comprehensive Divisional Project Forecast, which everybody has seen copies of. Uh, over the course of twenty five, we, uh, working with Joe and working closely with the group. Uh, we've really put together a very small focus group to be this, this strategic planning team. Moving forward, that team is in the room today. That, that consists of myself, Justin. Uh, Rebecca, who's not here, Representative Buck, Katie today, Amy, and then Chris Powers. And really what we're looking at is. Uh, from treatment through sewer collections, the engineering component. Uh, the source component with the watershed and then our financial component. That is the strategic planning team. Uh, the first meeting this year. Um. Was held and really what, what we did was we met to discuss. Was held and really what, what we did was we met to discuss. What the framework would be for the remainder of the year and developing one page plan. It has been propagated outward. To all of the division leaders that. We don't have the benefit going into twenty six or through twenty six of Joe Coffey putting together the one page plan that he typically has. While he, no, it was, it was a. Monumental lift, almost in a sense, trying to, to drag annual goals out of division leaders. And then Joe's worked through that for the past twelve years. Uh, and then taking the data that he did get, put together in the one page plan that he developed really twelve years ago. And, and you guys see that uh, that, that plan, that, that's going to be on us now. Uh, we do have, uh, fortunate having Joey here for um. Short term, who I, I think will give us some guidance in developing the one page. Uh, but what we've come to, uh, the decision of, as a group is. We are going to continue with the format that Joe has given you for the last twelve years. The group really likes. Uh, the format of the existing one page plan. We are going to take it and streamline it just a little bit, only so. Uh, it's a bit more focal and it, and it's a bit easier for. The group to interpret. Um, which we feel may be easier for those who take that, that singular one page. And, and get a pulse of what. The Albany Water Board and Albany Water Department are doing annually. So it will look very similar to what you've seen in the past years. What we are going to do uh is explain to the group of the course, the next. Uh, two months. Um, really how we derived at the data that's in that one, in one page. And give some direction moving forward of exactly how to read it and why it reads the way that it does. Uh, I, we, we have been given a directive from Joe to deliver you. Uh, the completed one page plan on December, December nineteenth meeting, so we will have that ready for you. Uh, that will include um a look at divisional North Stars. Um, I'll let Justin speak to it, but we're going to do some work on the uh. Our, our hierarchy. Well, and, and review of the, the current org chart. Uh, one, one big thing that they has kind of been a, a theme of the group is really looking at. The institutional knowledge that Joe and Bill possess and you have two commissioners here. Who have become so engaged and entrenched in what the water department is doing. Versus missionaries of the past that. Uh, we have a pretty, again, monumental lift in transferring that institutional knowledge to the next administration, so. Another uh job or, or task. That this group is spoke with really is helping build its new administrative transition. Not just here, but uh propagating that outward to higher level administration in the uh. In the mayor's office. Uh, so that's what we're looking forward to. Like I said, we'll have a deliverable for you on December nineteenth. And um. Uh, we'll be working the remainder of twenty six with this team unless there's, there are major changes.
Um, also, the break, but each one board members can have questions. I have one. And maybe Joe Coffey is going to deal with this later, but can you give us a quick update on the fluoride?
Yeah, actually, I've got a, uh, just real quickly, um. So we, we currently have four major construction projects going on with the treatment plant and treatment related apartments, and so. Uh, we have the er- erosion building project or erosion building rehab, I think everybody knows, we're about ninety percent complete there. Got some punch list items, we've got to finish up the exhaust bands. Uh, CTI, the actual industrial coating contractor, has to come back for some touch up work and um. That, that building moved back in service, probably going to go back in service before the exhaust fan work is done. I would say we're. Three weeks to a month away in, in putting that home back in service. We've got the, the lineman maintenance building. I'm saying we're about sixty-five percent complete there. Asphalt went down in the, uh, the new drive yesterday. The building's fully erected. The tanks are up and the, um, mechanical systems are going in as we speak. We've got three of the four roll up doors up. Uh, so that, that project's coming along. Um, fluoride. Fluoride, where I, I spoke to Rebecca, uh. At the last progress meeting, we had another one this week, but she was not able to attend. We're calling fluoride right now at about forty to forty-five percent complete after uh this week's progress meeting. Um, the walls of the building are actually up, the containment is up. Um, and it will move fairly quickly from here. They've got roof panels on site. And um, and Gallo is, is moving along. We got the updated uh. Instruction, the, the project schedule from Gallo yesterday, we're looking at a date right now of, of uh. Uh, January twenty sixth, actually start injecting fluoride is what we're looking at. We're also working very closely with uh Max Ferris and Rebecca Reli at Albany County DOH. They're taking a close look. At what we're doing, making sure with the mayor's office that information gets out to the public and, and also critical customers out there as well. The real issue, try to get a date certainly so that the health department can work with the pediatricians in the area. So they can notify in Schenectady, Albany, Rensler County, uh, that Albany will be forwarding water around January twenty sixth. That way they will not continue to prescribe supplements to the kids, so that's the date certain department that they're looking for. Uh, and then. Well, the, the last project we have going on right now, I'm not sure if everybody, where I think everybody is, but. Uh, Albany Water Department took over the old Herriman Pump Station when SUNY Herriman built. Uh, we did that for a couple of reasons. One, when the Culbin Avenue Pump Station was built to fill that Herriman tank. Uh, OGS was actually tasked at the time with demoing that station, but. Uh, we'll take a close look at that. With that old, um. Say, oh, the, the concrete ground source thing that's also on in that area, the pump station itself. Uh, we can, i- it's more efficient in creating that pressure zone with that particular pump station online. It also helps us pull some water from that area, circulate pretty well, and it helps us affect water age in that area. Uh, we made the decision to completely upgrade that pump station, so station's getting three new pumps and electrical service and the control system. Uh. Keller and P and J started about two weeks ago, we're about thirty percent on, on that project. Today. All the materials have been delivered and, and they're working away. And that, that progress, product's going to go relatively quickly. We see that being done. Uh, probably in the next three weeks to a month.
Any questions for Joe? Great. Justin?
Max. So I have many units under me, so I'm going to try to just highlight one or two things from each unit that um align with city goals and department goals. Um, first thing is on the T and D side, our uh in-house lead service replacement program has been completed on Harding and Marsdale Streets. Um, if anybody has any questions about what these are, it's us replacing all the lead on these streets of. Prior to any paving or where we know that we can replace full services easily. Um, we're currently starting Terrace Avenue from uh Melrose and Washington. And that started this week and hopefully will be done by the end of the month. We were trying to do a street a month, so. Uh, on the sewer side, our Beaver Creek Satellite Treatment Facility is now in winter operations mode, which means we're not disinfecting anymore. It gives us the opportunity to um catch up on some preventive maintenance in the plant, replace some more other equipment that needs to be replaced and uh. Really be ready for the spring when we have to start disinfection season again. Uh, we only need to disinfect during the uh recreation season, so during the winter months, we don't have to. Uh, restoration, the city has a. They're trying to complete all sidewalk restorations within two weeks. We have fallen behind on that. I've tasked my staff with completing that by the end of the year. We have about forty jobs that we need to do. It's an important task for us. Um, I'm assigning some staff from our sewer unit to help with our restoration group on that front. So that should be done within the next month, by the next month. Um, I believe first aid training is something that's come up in this group before. We completed a first aid training for all of our field staff. In the past, we've only done supervisors, but this year we're doing all of the staff at the department. Um, it's complete for field staff and the, uh, office staff will be trained in the, I mean, end of the month.
That's first aid and CPR.
Correct, yeah, first aid CPR and AED.
I think, James, I think you're the one who's asking about.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's um, should be done for the entire department by the end of uh December, by the next meeting. Um. I wanted to talk about leak detection. Uh, this year, we have been using this program for sixty-four seconds, which is constant. Monitoring on our water system. We put eight hundred sensors out. Um, there's still, we need to put out about twenty more, but by the next board meeting, I'm looking to present. Um, the area that we have included in this leak detection, the amount of leaks we've discovered and repaired and have a full report on that.
Joe, we've been sharing the actual numbers, but not the map of the area. That would be helpful to.
Going to have the dashboard and I can post it up there. Yeah, we're adding their last sensors this week and we have about twenty more to add, so. Um, it's a good percentage of the city. It's about thirty percent of the entire city, mostly in the older areas where we have old lead. Um, we found a lot of leaks. We've already found over a hundred leaks. We've repaired uh about thirty or forty of them, so. Plenty more to come, and I believe we spoke about this morning. That's part of the reason, I think, why our. Water produce number is lower than it really has been in the past, so. We're finding all these leaks that are not visible, so, so in my opinion, very important on account of order, so. And that is everything I have.
Any questions? I, I have one. There were problems at Lincoln Park with the screens. Did you get them left fixed?
At Beaver Creek?
I mean Beaver Creek.
Oh, yes, yep, yeah, we were able to. Yeah, I got in there myself a little bit, got a hand on, but we were able to replace all the parts. We have our screens fully operational. Um, we're planning on performing some more replacements in the winter. We are still screening, so we do have to schedule that with obviously any weather events we have, but. Yeah, we have a stockpile of parts. We've come up with some great SOPs for replacing some of that, which um. In hindsight, you know, i- it's a difficult application in that situation, so. It's not the easiest thing to maintain, but we, we're, we're finding a way. So yes, right now the screen is fully operational.
Katie, you're a pre-engineering.
Morning. Um, yeah, the most important item for engineering team right now is having our veteran staff. Uh, continue onboarding and training our newer staff. Um, and vice versa a little bit, so obviously, uh. Our veteran staff is providing a lot of training on uh utility. Management in general, but we're also getting a lot of great perspective and feedback from them on. Um, holes in our standard operating procedures and uh new and innovative ways to think about the way we. Do things and our processes, our, our new young staff are bringing a lot of great, great ideas. Um, to us in that regard. Um. Also, on Rebecca's agenda, Lysira is going to be posting my position, obviously, in the next month or so. Um, reviewing kind of what my duties are now and the, the um. Position description, make sure it's, it's what Rebecca wants to see um as an addition to her team. And um, another item, we've been talking about internally and. Uh, Bill and I just met with the city engineering staff again yesterday. We have a monthly meeting where our engineering staff meet with. City engineering staff, their team is uh feeling some, some loss, uh certainly. They have some retirees, they have um some, some holes that they're working on filling. They have a few posted positions, but. Uh, I think we just continue to reflect on how much better we coordinate with the city engineering folks than we used to. Um, always room for improvement, but uh specifically in our project coordination and. Um. You know, us planning for lead service replacement specifically with the street paving. Uh, contracts and continuing to talk about best ways for us to do projects together. As opposed to separate entities. I just think we continue to get better at, at doing that and it stands out a lot. Um, in terms of our active and future projects. Um, currently, we are mobilized on Lancaster to uh up in the. Suppose that's just south of, or just east of the Melrose neighborhood, Lancaster between Manning Boulevard and North Pine. Um, we're going to be able to connect a massive new drainage system that they have just completed on Manning Boulevard. With an already existing um separated storm system on, that begins at North Pine, so just one block of work. Um. To, to connect those two stormwater systems, which will be a really, really great improvement. Um, for that neighborhood that has flooding issues.
Yeah, that's as a add-on to uh Newcastle's. Then, I'm training.
Boulevard existing contract.
We're going to use some of our lead services money. We have seen money for the. Lead services and. Um. The storm so that it'll be out of, uh, water points, um, palace. But that, uh, that's really nice to get that, um, going into our Beaver Creek. Stormwater retention system.
At the.
Yeah.
Um, then, and just doing some project planning for next year, working with our consultants on several separated storms, your projects. Um. More talk, like at Boulevard and Vertolters and more of those. And just one other item I wanted to mention because it, it, it'll be a community item. Um, we are required to do annual notification for our consumers for. Lead and unknown service lines, so by December thirty first, we'll be sending an update of our inventory, which has had thousands of updates since. Past year at this time, when we did our initial um submission to DOH, we have hundreds of those per month, hundreds of updates. And then for a month. Um, so we will send a refresh as required to all of our consumers, which doesn't mean building owners. But rather, um, our consumers at the tap, so renters and residents. Um, notifying them that they do have a lead line and we know that they have a lead line or they have a line that is unknown, so. Um, that is a notification to be going out for December thirty first, and we do have. Um, approval from DOH to put that information on a postcard for less expensive mailing. Um, as opposed to a full brochure, um. So that, that will be today, I think.
Katie, what's the numbers on our inventory right now for?
Yeah, so we have officially, oh gosh, identified. Somewhere around oh five thousand probably lead lines and four thousand copper lines verified. Um, our unknowns still hang around seventeen thousand something, um officially. As we know, most of those are not unknowns, most of them are just lead, but we don't. Put into our inventory that anything is verified unless we have seen it in the ground or seen it at the meter as being a lead line.
And the public facing inventory on the website is real time?
Yes.
Any questions? Last question, who's going to take over the lead service program?
Hey. We have a task force meeting December ninth to talk about that, um. And I have been training our, our new staff on, on pieces of it and in training Rebecca on pieces of it as well. Um, but we'll, we'll have an official answer for that shortly, for the next board meeting.
I have a question. Can you update us on the living guard in Lincoln Park?
I can.
You've done. Amy, and before you start, I just want to say, Katie, thank you for getting us started on the lead service line. And for all the great work we've done.
Thanks.
We wish you well.
Yeah.
We wish you.
I feel a. Huge sense of uh gratefulness for my time here and I, uh. One of the things I'm hoping to do in my new role is bring lead service replacement programs like the one I've been able to develop here to other. One of the things I'm hoping to do in my new role is bring lead service replacement programs like the one I've been able to develop here to other. Other communities who are not as progressed as Albany. Um, I've had people tell it to me. Time and again, Albany's lead service replacement program is maybe with the exception of Buffalo. The most progressed in the state of New York, so it's. It's um very rewarding. It's the most important thing I feel that I've worked on in my career, a cornerstone probably. And uh I'm excited to hopefully bring that to some other communities and so.
Don't forget it.
I will not. My fiance does still have to work here.
Amy?
Sure, um, I thought I'd just talk about a project that encompasses um uh pretty much the whole watershed unit. Um, watershed, reservoir, forestry, our field unit, um. And also speaks to what are the resolutions we have on the agenda later today regarding invasive species grants, um. We have a portion of the Albany Water Board property on the western shore of the Alco. It's about a thirteen-hundred acre parcel. It's our most degraded um portion of the property. It's been hit really hard by invasive species. And it's regrowing with these species. It's just, it's just really bad shape, um. It's degraded and that leads to bad water quality. We've had, um, we've broken it up into a number of um restoration blocks, so they've been trying to manage it. And tackle it and we've done, um, over the past year, we've done a couple of big projects on it already. We currently have a hot uh restoration area that we. Are um building a deer exclusion fence that we received a grant from Albany County Shore Water Force, so our staff is doing that in-house. And our next area that we're, we're looking to work on is uh area all on Alco Reservoir that um. Has uh again, the forest has pretty much died and we're looking to do a big, big push on. Uh forestry operations there, water quality operations, tree planting, rest uh invasive species work. And we're applying for an invasive species grant to cover all that work, hopefully with your, with your guys' support. Um, to do that work. Um, that's kind of the, the quick overview of that. We're also, this work is also, um, this area includes the Anne Frey Creek, which is the main tributary to the Alco. Alco Reservoir, so it's really important area. And because of this area being so important, we've concluded this work to reach up into the watershed as well, so we're kind of made this like a. A very large project for, it's gonna be a multi-year project, um. Probably forever, but you know, we're looking like five years out, five years out, right? Project, um, so uh even on the water side, we've done extra sampling out into the reservoir, we're working an outreach program. With the farmers and different uh land use up there, so we're, we're working on it. On a small scale, out to a large scale, and then out into a whole watershed, so it's kind of a neat thing, and again, using all aspects of our. And with that, we just um went through another audit with our nationally certified uh sustainability certificate for forestry. Underneath uh TNC's Forest stewardship council certificate. All clear. They've got good grades on it, no uh non-conformance found, so. All as well, silver.
Any problems with hemlocks?
Uh, so we have lots of problems with hemlocks, but we've been on the forefront of that, working um in-house and with Cornell. Um, and with uh Prism, uh the partners for regional invasive species. Um, so we have blocks of area that we've been protecting our hemlock and we continue to do that. It's one of the high priorities. For hemlock, because it's are pretty much most important, they're all important, but they're most important repairing trees for, for water quality and. Longer, along of our tributaries and short line areas. And they're being hit by another invasive species, a little bug that pretty much. Also, but at least it's a long-term uh things. We have some time to.
Is it the silver bug or something maybe?
Well, the silver fly is what we released to try to eat the bad bug. That, that is a hemlock way indulgent. It's a little fuzzy looking bug that eats the needles of the hemlock. So it's actually out right now. You can see it on the hemlock trees.
Any questions for, for you?
So, one thing I, I forgot to mention, uh in, in this kind of crosses over departments. Uh, New York State and Albany County Department of Health have tasked us with performing a sanitary survey. Uh, they actually do the sanitary survey, but just for everybody's information in here, uh we started that process last week. Uh, Justin, Rebecca and I were in that, in that meeting. Uh, they came in and reviewed all of our regulatory compliance documentation. Uh, they took a lot of that paperwork out of the office, those binders with them for review. Uh, and they'll be back the first week of December to do physical inspections of. Source point, the plant and our uh, our distribution locations, our remote pump stations. Uh, very similar, if you remember, to what uh the federal EPA did between three and four years ago. Uh, it's just at, at the state level, we'll, we'll get a report back of. Now, hopefully not, nothing out of compliance. I don't see anything that, that looks like that, but we'll get a report with, with recommendations and uh. Any deficiencies that they see and it'll just, it'll, it'll push, you know, future uh cattle projects, future maintenance, things like that.
Joe Copy.
Have you put the uh PowerPoint? This is a report that, and this one, do it as a slideshow, please. Report that we give to the mayor's senior staff every month, and this is the last one we did and go to the, and start the slideshow. The next one. So this is kind of the summary that we shared, uh, it's essentially taken. A lot of the information that we pull off that KPI Excel spread, spreadsheet that is actually on your site that summarizes some of the uh. The financials. You asked about the uh Lincoln Park Learning Garden. Uh, we actually were down there looking at this week. They're gonna be, be mobilized at the end of this month. A lot of the features are essentially done except for the outdoor classroom. So it's actually starting to look like a park, uh the, the uh, the bridge is kind of up over the constructed. It's looking, looking pretty good, so uh we'll be. Completing that classroom building in the spring, actually reached out to the Albany City School District, Ron Vesco, they're actually gonna be responsible for. For getting the use of the outdoor classroom and we're, you know, they need to, we need to work with everyone on. An official grid, who's the account holder and, you know, wifi for them is gonna be through the school district, but. So Lisa Merwin's doing a pretty good job on that, I'm expecting some inspiration.
How wide is that, Joe? I'm sorry. How wide is that? The, the space that you're gonna put the classrooms and.
How big is the classroom building?
Well, how big is the, you're, you're gonna go through what I used to call a gully.
There are the.
There's no longer that.
It's actually this drive down, I'm gonna drive down the street, look at it on Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Okay.
It's right next to the building. It's starting to shape up. It's a little busy up in the front with construction equipment, but you get a good sense of looking back in, you can see.
Okay.
Towards the long pathways out there, it's being landscaped.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it looks pretty sweet, actually. Um, we already talked about the fluoridation project and we'll go to the next one. So, uh. This is interesting. Go to just show the next slide, actually. So thi- this is the new normal as far as water production year to date. We're about five point, you know, just over five billion gallons, around five billion gallons. Through uh October, so we'll wind up with just around maybe just over six billion gallons for the year. Which is about a billion gallons less than what it was twelve years ago. I think some of that is leak detection, leaking fixing, the leaks that Justin mentioned, but this is the new normal. This shows the impact of COVID and go, go back to the earlier slide. And again, this is uh the twenty-twenty-three, the Bethlehem Build and Purchase Agreement just expired, so again, I think we're post-COVID. Hybrid work environment, whatever it is, the numbers we're seeing now are the numbers. We've got to skip a couple. So, this is the uh, the revenue and this is the billings. We identify where we've had rate increases each of the last six years. And, you know, I think we've always talked about, again, looking at the fact that the last three years. The water production consumption is about the same number. And yet you can see the billings number and the, and the cash numbers are escalating quite dramatically. That's what Bill kind of talks about, you dilatize your rate increases, they're baked in the cake forever. We're beginning to see that. Even with the flat water consumption, these numbers are going up, so that's, that's a good sign. Um. And again, I think, you know, we got a little pound money with Bethlehem this year, but that I suspect will continue with some sort after. Bill negotiates the new purchase agreement with that next slide. This is again, this Katie's work, and I think it shows the impact of working with the city engineer's office on. Including some of our lead service replacements and the contracts for paving. I think it was a great working relationship. We finally had, I think, a work collaboration that we've been trying to get for twelve years. It took a while, but I think it's always people-based. How, Howard, I think, was instrumental in getting that. Uh, communication and cooperation established in these programs. We had the right people, they had the right people. This is what happens when you work together, so I think that's. And this is a testament to the Water Board's commitment, almost one point four million dollars. And grant money that's been given out to the community for lead service replacements that came out of our funds. Next one. Uh, Sarah tracks these incident and injury reports, uh. You know, we've had medical treatment lost time higher this year. The lost days total are about the same because it's really the nature of the injuries. We got one guy that had surgery for a. I guess a broken muscle or pulled.
Torn bicep.
Torn bicep muscle. Uh, hopefully he'll be coming back pretty soon. Uh, I think we just need to stay on top of this. It's, it's situational awareness. We either have, usually it's just. Improper technique or making a mistake and judgment on what you wanna do. Some of that is younger employees, new employees that perhaps don't have the experience. And some of us, as we go, who don't have the physical capacity that we thought we did when we're younger and do things that we probably shouldn't be doing, which is what happened.
Well, that happens to the young guys too, who think that went in the gym, they can lift so much weight, but when you actually.
Find yourself as the young guys that. All right, next one. You're still young. It is again, shows a little bit of the scoreboard. This is always the yin and yang of do you put something up like this or not, because you wanna ensure that people, if they get hurt, that they report it. But at the same time, you wanna say, geez, look how good our department is, because we're working smart, we're not getting hurt. We'd like to have that forty-four days, that would be a whole lot higher than that. Some departments are obviously. Maybe less prone to injuries because of the nature of the work. Sewer, you know, T and D, we'd expect that they'd have a little more activity because the work is a little more risky, it's a little more physical based, so uh. Uh, usually if it's administration where we have something that's somebody like me doing a face plant, you know, tripping over a step, so next one. Uh, we already talked about these a little bit, so I'm not gonna go into it, uh. These were the numbers that we had before, so I think that's pretty much it on the, the slides. Yeah, I think that's, that's these slides, so we'll go to that later. Any questions on our stuff? I know Bill's got his update to do.
Bill?
Mentioned it. Are you still in conversation with Bethlehem?
Um.
About their.
That really sets the light uh last time, when we talked about the uh. Your comeback to a proposal, uh, we could uh. We could work on uh, on that thing, uh. It's just uh, if the board would, would like me to uh advance that. Uh. I mean, their idea was to uh, to have a higher minimum and then get the love. Above that minimum would be at the tier one rate, uh so that it would never get bumped into the tier two notes. Um, if uh. If there needs to be a resolution, the board just wants to be prepared to leave on that, so I'd give.
I have one other thing I, I forgot to bring up. We did do uh our master services agreements uh with our consultants. Uh, engineers expire at the end of this year, so we did an RFP. Uh, we have shortlisted a few firms that we're interviewing, have recommendations for the board at the December meeting.
So I, I think last year we uh. We did get into a modification with Bethlehem. It didn't happen right for a January meeting, um, and we are only one year into a bachelor agreement, so. Um, we can still have a little bit more discussion and we'll be, um, get to a meeting in four days.
Use your best judgment.
Okay. Uh, just going through uh here, a bunch of two thousand twenty-one, as you mentioned, we're kind of working through the last of that. Is some of the projects we're doing right now, so. About a million and a half left that, that be drawn down from the prostate. Eighteen-five-two-three, we're actually uh in discussions right now about going long-term with that financing. Uh, we're closing it then in June, uh so we have a workshop that we have to do with the EFC coming up in December. Um, that will get thrown in the number of recent.
Nate, is Joe Scott still involved or is he really retired?
Joe Scott's still not involved, still uh, he's still got Chris Amira and uh. Which is the same team that's been working on, on this, yeah, he still was gonna participate in the workshop. Uh, number one, December for eighteen-five-two-three. Hmm. Eighteen-nine-on-three, we, we, we've been getting dispersments against that now, so there's. There's still two and a half nine dollars available. We're using that up for the projects I'm going up for Peter Bush right now. Um, and uh, so that's uh, nothing really too new to import there. Basically reservoir, um. We uh. And we've applied for REA uh grant money and we'll see in the next month or so when the state comes through with any grant money, plus we have. Applied for WQIP money, um, so uh, we'll see, but otherwise. We're getting to the point where we're gonna have footproof plans and permitting and we need to look forward with that, that financing. Uh, whether or not we get the grant money. We're gonna be in a position where we need to move forward with it. We, we don't have a consent order from D C and we're thankful, but we have to tell D C that they're. Gonna be moving forward and if I'm sorry, that is, that's what's saying under here, so.
My memory may be fading, but when we started talking about the, talking about the eighteen-dollar cost.
Well, one of the reasons.
I'm surprised it went up, but.
That is why the numbers figured is because EFC is now telling us to include a bunch of things continuously. Than in the past. I think it's because they have so many projects that gone with budget and rather than needing to have. Amendments of financings which end up being a former closing, um. You've got building like thirty thousand, maybe thirty-seven thousand bucks, which. They end up being more, who knows in this economy, what uh, what really is happening with costs, so, um. So. We've applied for here and, and grant money for both for the lake and basically reservoir, but um. We'll see, we'll see what we get. Probably wouldn't get. He correct, he grants on both of those things, uh, right, so the next door is better. Uh, in terms of uh brand because of the bigger concern for loss of property and. And, and life that they will bond with it then, so um. That's, that's that uh, the answer. We've also been told that I, I didn't bring it to this board meeting, but. Uh, Sramble has a, a new twist on a ransom lake project. Uh, in regard to seismic design and there's gonna need to be another amendment to the project to take into account. Some more that has to be done for seismic design. Actually, something similar to what was done for basic codes, um. Now, the, a special construction, maybe a downstream, maybe anything, uh for seismic design. So that uh, we'll get to a point for some of those. Nineteen-five-five-four, which is full northern name, we're, uh, that's been pending for a while. We, we, we told the EFC we wanted to move ahead with that financing. Getting to twenty-twenty-five, we're finally getting paperwork to move, move into closing on that. Um, and uh, so that uh, that we're expecting, we're gonna close on. Uh, lead service replacement, we're, we're, we're using our money, uh, uh, Katie is saying. We've, we're gonna be running out of that money and be needing to look at the, the next financing, which is. On our list here is nineteen-nine-nine-two, um, so the projects that we have coming up in twenty-twenty-five. Um, so in twenty-twenty-six, we should be good. The uh, Central Atlantic East project, which is quite a big, you know, project in cities building. This is the DOT ten money. We think that project will go out to bid in the fall of twenty. We think that project will go out to bid in the fall of 2026. So it'll be a 2027 project. If you don't have the next financing in place, we might not have enough funds to do the Central Avenue East. You'll have to, without there being financing. Then we'll be in a position of saying whether there's a lot of grant money to continue this whole, you know, since I'm supposed to, for now. So that's, that's what I don't know. The, and the let's share the sanctuary and it's kind of using. We've got him drawing on that net, but we'll be drawing on that. It should be against the same targets with Newcastle and we'll see where they're going right now. Foration Grant, we, we put in for a first dispersment against that. Definitely, definitely is where you're probably working on that. Long-term control plan projects, which are these series of clean waters, so we have fourteen, zero, zero, one, oh, two. So we're just kind of finishing up getting these first ones and the oh, one and the oh, two. Should pretty much wrap those up in next month or two. Fourteen oh four is mostly with projects and co-hosts and Troy. And actually, we never called this afternoon with the EFC when we went to the houses. Those has a grant of forty billion thousand dollars that they have imposed down, but they went ahead with construction. We're interested in the co-hosts, making sure we forget that on some of that off sales that costs you a little bit changes. Like a kind of garden, one yard is, we've been looking at getting, getting money out of. E C or WQIP money. We're mostly using the grant money for the building, the project. And they're using mostly one of them funds for the. Enemy Road is, is clean water, sorry, seventeen zero zero. We haven't touched that too much yet. We've been using the G I G P grant money and WQIP money. And we're also starting using seventy zero zero, but we also have a habit, strong water project that we're going to bend in year one that will use that money. Beaver Creek, it's just finishing up. Source system improvements, National Waterman, Kings, we're working on that. And I think National Waterman is now getting into their mining. So that, I don't know how many months that might take. Katie, is that going to be next few months?
Maybe two months. They have a, they gave us a scheduled start date for lining, cleaning holidays. So probably going to ask them to leave till first week of the new year. And they plan to mobilize and stay mobilized until they're done. So lining may be only in one.
So lining is going to get done here quickly. Thermo Terrace is twenty zero zero and twenty one zero zero, and sewer collection system, those two. What they found out was financing is on the junior. We've got the money if you want. But there was, in the first quarter of 2026. Well, the sewer collection improvements, we're going to be able to start doing some sewer lining projects, the bad money. Early in 2026, they're getting things out to pay the back. Some of the other work that needs some engineering, they haven't actually started with a consultant on that. We'll be using our, our new master services agreements to, to get engineering proposals to do that, some of the work for that sewer collection. Well, that's got an awful lot of grant funding this twenty one zero zero. And then Bill and diversion, we, we still have that on hold. We have, we've got a real economical project after that. North Hawk Street, we've been talking about getting that out to bid in the spring. They still don't have a signed grant, but there seems to be some movement of E C to get that taken down. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Bill, very much. No other questions for Bill or Joe? Keith? No, I'm sorry, Laura.
Sure. Um, thank you, everyone. Chairman, you had mentioned it earlier, the tax challenges against the council, Westerloren, Quimans. I, I don't have too much of an update honestly today. What I'm trying to do at work right now is get us a trial date so that we could get on the calendar for 2026. Maybe not have to breathe for 2026. And once that happens, I'll be in a position to give the board a litigation budget, which would include both experts. So expert for appraisal and then cost expert as well. And, you know, I think that that would be a good time to discuss and have questions from the board as to what we can expect with respect to trial. But right now I'm in a little bit of a holding pattern with council. And hopefully by December we'll have a date so that we can get you that information. Um, board training reminder, I had a note that each of our board members, we had to complete the A B O training this year. The next two dates available for that are December third and December 10th. I'm not quite sure where we're at with everyone having completed, but. Okay, perfect. So we're all good? Oh, good. All right. So we can remove that from. From my agenda. Okay. And then.
They ever get a gold star?
Yes, we all did great. A B O special report on website transparency reviews. A B O came out with a new special report on October 30th, 2025. And it was very timely because we were already working on our transparency on our website. So we were ahead of the game there. But I did just want to kind of point out a few things in this guidance. Public authorities, just like the water board should monitor and regularly update their website, which includes making sure all links function properly. The information provider must be accurate and complete. Individuals should be able to navigate through the website with ease and have little difficulty finding the desired information and documents. And then all documents should be prepared using common terminology that facilitates a better understanding of the content. And I think this board does a really good job of making sure that, you know, the public, especially through Steve's communication, really understands what we do here. Part of this guidance that came out in October also spoke about record retention policy guidance. I'll have more for the board in the early part of the year, possibly an update to whatever is already existing with respect to retention, record retention policy. Period. That's it. I'll have that, I'll have that. Other than that, one other item that I don't think we addressed was the scheduling of the rate hearing. I, I don't know if we wanted to save that for another part of the.
Last board meeting, you knew the authorized that.
That you would schedule the date. Yeah, we just didn't talk about the date. And so one thought we had was December 16th at 6:00 P M. That would require that we get our notice out, if I'm reading the timeline correctly, today. Because we would need to post it by Wednesday of next week. So if all's good with that, we'll make sure that gets out today to the T U.
It'll be here. That works for me. I can do.
Okay.
I think that's the date I sent you.
All right.
Do you want to mention that intermunicipal agreement in the first prize?
Yeah, I haven't, I honestly haven't had a chance to take a look at it. First prize, we're still working through some language with respect to the intermunicipal utility agreement. Phil, you've given me comments, working with R C and court counsel's office, kind of pushed that forward. Don't really have anything from the board yet from me, but we'll keep you posted. One other item that might come up, I know earlier this year, we had a presentation from National Grid with respect to an easement request over a $168 Delaware Ave. We've, Bill and I have put our heads together and spoken with National Grid about other entities that have easement rights in that area. They reconfigured what, what they're going to do or what their plan is with respect to an easement from the water board, which looks as though now it won't compete or restrict or intersect with other easement rights that are in the area. So for our policy, you know, my recommendation is that we wait for National Grid to come to us within appraisal. And then we can really give a good recommendation to the board about whether we should grant, but they've been, you know, forthcoming with information and good work, but. Nice.
Any questions? Thanks.
Yeah.
Why not just stay up so late?
I know, right?
What's, what's Theo going to say?
He's an actual staff.
Steve, you're up.
All right. Say all the time, you know, some fun stuff. Um, all right. So last October, we had a pretty big spiky numbers and, and a big reason for that was because of Eric's passing. The outpouring from community across so many different areas was, was incredible. So rest in peace, Eric. And, you know, these are a lot of engagement in 43,000 plus views on, on his posts. So they had a lot of eyes. So we're talking anything. Yeah. And he had a big impact across a lot of people. So that's a big driver for so many of the increased engagement that we had for the month of October. In, in October, though, we had a very successful trunk or treat. Justin was there. There was, there was a massive amount of people. It was, it was just incredible to see everybody. Lisa was a huge help. Along with Matt and Pete Vitale, who's, he's actually in this picture here. He's in costume, but he's a ghost, just can't see him. I wrote that joke a long time ago. It fell flat with my lung. So the local water matters day, which was a huge success that came in pain. Got into a, a lot of different, different areas. We were able to lean on local electeds to help deliver that message and help expand the awareness of how important local water means within the community and across the state. The national A W W A liked and shared a few of our posts. And so it got some really, really good traction. And so we hope to see this continue even more. We had over seven hours and 21 minutes of viewing, and that's longer than the Star Wars, so initial three. Uh, so on the horizon though, the projects page for our website is continuously improving. We are looking to have that live soon. We're trying to incorporate the G I S mapping into that so that as G I S updates, that our website is updated, very similar to how we're working with Katie's lead service line. So as that, it's updating our mapping, our website's updating. So it's really only one person that's controlling it. You don't have to have a multiple bunch of hands on this whole thing. So uh, we are enhancing our department awareness across the city, trying to get with other departments here to try to just kind of boost up their, their voice via online as well as, you know, definitely on our website and more. More of your dollars have worked and just working on my 2026 market plan, which I will be presenting in December if anybody wishes to submit. Um, so we're just always continuing the conversation. Just to say this real quick, you know, over the past year, the amount of positive engagement I have seen from the community has gone, you know, up incredibly high. And I just want to say to everybody here, you're a part of that. And you should all be proud of the contribution that you do here. So I just want to say thank you very much for making my job a little easier when I'm out there and not hitting, you know, kicked in the teeth so much. So I appreciate it very much.
You're a video star too. All these YouTube videos of you were great.
I mean, I get all of 10 of those, Joe. One and my, one and my mother and the other member. So again.
How are you?
Uh, it's, it's good. Yeah, it's good. Any questions?
One of the things that we may want to start thinking about is, is your role as more of an official spokesperson to the department moving forward. I think it's just something that we need to have an internal dialogue, you know, with, you know, with talk hours and meetings when Bill or I are kind of around, I think we've thrown around under the fire a little bit. So it's just something that we probably want to pick around and get the board input on that. Uh, so we don't want to have everybody out there yapping all the. So that's something that you and Bill probably want to talk about a little bit.
Okay, yeah.
That way you could be yelled at at 2:00. Bill wasn't much in favor of that.
Yeah, sure.
One thing I just from an outreach and communication, I just want to share with the board, Joe, T, T, Bean and I had we were approached by the New York A W W A to nominate and somehow recognize Eric Hurley as a outstanding operator for New York. So we did in fact submit information, I submitted information to nominate him for operator of the year. And I think the city water fleet was kind of do the same thing because you were kind of between places, between Albany and and water fleet at that time. So I'm confident that that'll get the appropriate recognition that he certainly deserves for the role he played as an operator and kind of inspiration. And a model for, for how people should really do the job correctly. That's just FYI.
Do we have any new business that we need to discuss? I guess not. On revolutions, they're going to change things a little bit since Laura writes them. He's now going to read them.
Yeah.
And you just go with the whereasses.
Got it.
Because everybody's gotten them out of town.
Yes, okay. Um, all right. Let's talk about. All right. Resolution 2577, resolution approving 2026 budget of the Department of Water and Water Supply for sufficient for the county council. Now for the, now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby approves the 2026 budget for the Department of Water. Think that we also had it appended as appendix A.
I have a motion. Any questions? I have a motion to approve. The moment we second, in all favor.
Resolution 2578, resolution acknowledging completion of annual review policies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby acknowledges its completion of the annual review of its policies.
Any questions? Most new group, all right. Second, second, all favor. Notice how much quicker it goes. We shortened them up.
Resolution number 2579, resolution adopting 2026 meeting schedule. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby adopts the 2026 meeting schedule and add tier two as appendix A.
Motion approved, so move second, second, all favor, I mind.
Resolution number 2580, resolution designating contracting officer pursuant to property disposition policy. This is one that we have previously discussed. So I'll read it and we can discuss whether or not you want to approve it. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby designate, designates the commissioner of the Department of Water and Water Supply as the contracting officer. And in case of the absence or inability of the commissioner or of a vacancy in the office, the deputy commissioner shall serve as the contracting officer. This would be, it's not necessarily, necessarily mean a formal amendment to the policy, but this would satisfy the policy to define who your contracting officer is. So, so something to.
I think it makes good sense.
Okay, good.
I really do.
All right.
And then we can amend the policy and make a note at the bottom that is the moment.
Yeah.
By voting for this, we're technically amending the policy.
By voting for this, you're, you're not technically amending the policy because your policy says that you can, you can resolve to appoint a contracting officer. If you didn't resolve to do that, then it would be the commissioner by default anyway. So you're kind of just following your policy. We're doing a double layer here. So it's something that you don't necessarily need to amend. Yeah.
Any question? I have a motion to approve, so move second, in all favor, I mind. Thank you. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2581, resolution to extend agreement with Environmental Real Estate Solutions LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby A, extends the term of the agreement for an additional one-year term. Will expire on December 31st, 2026. And B, authorizes either the chairman or the commissioner to execute a letter setting forth the extension, which shall become effective upon the counter signature of an authorized representative of E R E S. E R E S is our W Q I P consultant, Jim Dawes, someone who Amy and I work with, well, Amy more so than I, works with regularly. I don't know if you want to speak to it at all or.
Uh, no, it's just integral in helping with the real estate transaction aspect of the W Q I P program.
Uh, no, it's just integral in helping with the real estate transaction aspect of the W Q I P program.
Any questions? And motion approved. Second, second, all favor. I'm on. Motion carries.
Resolution number twenty five eighty two, resolution approving change order with Bella professional surveying and environmental services relative to acquisition of property. Under the W Q I P program. Um, now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board approves the change order annexed here to as appendix A. To include within Robella's scope of services, secret compliance services for an additional lump sum of four thousand dollars. The total estimated fee for the collective services often plated in the proposal and change order is thirty one thousand, um, forty five dollars. This one, um, maybe Amy, I'll let you speak to it as well, but basically we wanted to ensure we're going to, um. Acquire the Hickey property, which is about a hundred and twenty two acres in Cleveland's and because of its size, it's going to require a larger seeker review. So consultant would assist with that.
Don't want to add anything, Amy, or?
Uh, we spoke about the Hickey property, uh, last board meeting. Um, yeah, this is just an additional to that survey and environmental assessment that Robella will be providing.
Yep.
Be a nice addition.
Yeah, it's contiguous with the Alco property.
Yeah.
It's gonna be great. Yeah.
Any questions? And I'm motion to approve, so move second, in all favor. I'm on. Motion carries.
Resolution number twenty five eighty three, resolution authorizing chairman to execute license agreement with Alco Preservation Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby authorizes the chairman to execute a license agreement with the Alco Preservation Association, subject to council approval.
Yeah, it's just one of those historic markers that actually A P A reached out and we wrote a letter support in twenty twenty for Chuck. That they want to put on our property down near the old mill off of Waterboard and one eleven road.
You'll be able to see it from the road.
Correct, yes. It just indicates the old mill that was down there.
Any questions? You have a motion to approve, so move second, in all favor. I'm on. Motion carries.
Resolution number twenty five eighty four, resolution authorizing chairman to execute license agreement with Ravina Quemans Historical Society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby authorizes the chairman to execute a license agreement with the Ravina Quemans Historical Society. Subject to council approval.
So, um, same thing, a historic roadside marker that refers to the, um, the Indian Fields town that was underneath the Alcores bar. Right along the one, Route one forty three and that Quemans.
I think these are great.
It's nice to be part of the community.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve, so move second, in all favor. I'm on. Motion carries.
Resolution number twenty five eighty five, resolution supporting application for the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and invasive species grant filter. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board hereby supports and authorizes the submission of a rent application to, uh, New York State D E C. For funding in the amount of ninety four thousand five hundred dollars and commits a funding match. Amount of thirty one thousand five hundred dollars for a total amount of a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Through the invasion invasive species grant program in support of water source protection and to reduce the impacts of invasive species. Through control, removal, research and preservation.
This is what you were talking about earlier. Yes. Right, we have to do it. And I have a motion to approve, so move second, in all favor. I'm on. Thank you.
Resolution number twenty five eighty six, resolution approving change order A B G O four, Purebush. W F P Aeration Room renovation general contract with Gallo Construction Board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Water Board approves change order A B G O four dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty five, annexed here to as appendix A. To the Purebush Water Filtration Plant Aeration Room renovation project, the general contract with Gallo Construction Board. Which A adds change order lines for specified items. B increases the contract amount by three thousand ninety six dollars and fifty seven cents. And, uh, C leaves unmodified, unmodified the contract completion date. The contract amount will increase to three million twenty five thousand two hundred twenty seven dollars and forty one cents. The contract completion date remains October twenty three, twenty twenty.
You don't want to have Amy have all the fonts of those ones for the.
Any questions or comments? Explanation, you're pretty clear. Again, I have a motion to approve, so move second, in all favor. I'm on. Motion carries. Well, that was very well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No reason for an executive second? Don't go. I, before I announce the date of the next meeting, I'd like. The board members, Aaron, Laura, Laura and Bill Khan is drawing a room. Would like each day for just a few minutes. I have something. Personal I want to talk to you about. The next board meeting will be on Friday, December nineteenth at twenty twenty five at nine o'clock. And I have a motion to adjourn, so move second, in all favor.